Hi folks, we have a busy night. I appreciate everybody being here. Do us a favor, head count, make sure your cell phones are turned off, I appreciate that. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Media Act, I have the notice of this meeting and it provided us, as specified in the act, proper notice of the public media was provided in the notice of, said notice was posted at the address of the board office, mail to the Nutley Sun, the Starplex, and the Journal Harold News, and the Nutley Journal, mail to the Nutley Township Park, advertising the Nutley Sun, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. As I mentioned, a consideration of all here present and a recognition of the importance of these proceedings. It is requested that all cell phones and pages be turned off for sound resolution of the meeting. Thank you very much. Staff, for further instructions, please.
For further instructions, please. United States of America, and the free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
More for Mr. Puffin.
Mrs. Dancheck, here. Ms. Klein, here.
Here.
Mr. Cookman.
Here.
Dr. Lee. Ms. Russo.
Here.
Ms. Scoler.
Here.
Ms. Cusado.
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Here.
Approve the minutes?
Make motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Thank you. Correspondents, Mr. Jennings.
Today.
You can start. Your vote call?
The vote in favor.
More in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
There is Jeff Corstman.
Okay.
Mr. Kaczynski, I'm Mr. Kapello.
Right here.
Thank you, sir. As always, Mr. Kapello, committing our efforts in not only staying compliant with state mandates when it comes to HIV and the regulations, but also redeeming the teaching and learning that goes on in the state as we're trying to be proactive. Teaching students not only how to make better choices and not to bully those students, but how to react if confronted with that kind of situation. And so, we are actually required by the state to rate our progress, and we received our feedback from the state. Mr. Kapello, should I have the word?
I guess we're just doing some technical, I don't have it memorized, I wish I did. Just glad to see everyone's here for the self-assessment of the Anti-Bullying Initiative. Thank you all for coming.
I know you've been doing this long enough, I would think you would know it by heart right now, right?
Yeah, it's a little different.
I know.
I guess I could get started though, while Ian fixes it. He takes care of it. The Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act was passed in January 2011. So it came into effect in September of 2011. It was the first year of part of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act.
This is latest technology at work.
There you go, thank you. Ian, I could I advance with this one or?
Thanks, Ian.
Ian's gonna have to do it. In fact, Danny's gonna have to do it.
Are you gonna advance? Okay, thank you. So, part of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act was that the state of New Jersey, the Department of Ed stated that at the conclusion of each year, the state was gonna grade each school district, well, each school was gonna be graded on their anti-bullying initiative. And basically, what the average of all those schools, their grade, will be the district's grade. So this is why we're here this evening. In March, we received a notice from the Department of Ed stating that schools will be self-assessing. Prior to this, I didn't have any knowledge. I was on the assumption that we were gonna be submitting reports, and they were gonna come and give us a grade. Well, in March, we received this memo stating that we will be grading ourselves. Ian? So, part of the assessment was not from last school year, the 2011-2012 school year. It was gonna start midway through the year. So, this is actually from January 2011 to June of last month. What the state did, they provided us with a 24-page rubric. And in that rubric, there was eight core elements. There were eight, I guess you'd say standards, with indicators stating that if you met this indicator, how do we know if you met this indicator? Here's a category. Did you meet it partially? Did you meet it? Did it meet all requirements, or did you exceed all the requirements? And it gave us examples of what we had to do. In addition to those examples, they also stated that we need to provide sample documentation. Once again, we do not have this until March. So throughout, from March to the end of the school year, the anti-bullying specialists were trying to gather as much information they can to help substantiate our ratings. So, one of the things that we worked on was trying to gather all this information because this will be part of Q-SAC. They could come in and they could say, "Well, how do we know? Please substantiate your ratings for the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights." Ian, right? There were, once again, there were eight elements. The first element talked about, discussed HIV, just to let you know, stands for harassment, intimidation, bullying, were the programs, approaches, and other initiatives. There were five indicators. One of them was, is your district establishing programs? The second one was, are you implementing programs? And the third one, are you assessing? The next one talked about, does your initiatives address HIV? The fifth one is your school safety team identifying and reviewing school climate. Once again, I am the coordinator, I oversee the anti-bullying initiative. However, the principal and the school, and the anti-bullying specialist of each school basically runs the show at that school regarding HIV. All right? I am here to provide state, the information for the state, as well as conduct presentations for the Board of Education and for the public. The second core element talked about training on the, training on the Board of Education-approved HIV policy. Are we training staff? Are we training staff on the protected characteristics? Are we discussing the policy with students? The third core element had five indicators. Is there instruction on HIV as well as suicide prevention? Which one of the things that we were planning on doing was, this past June, was doing a program for suicide prevention for staff. However, it's been postponed until the fall. Are the anti-bullying specialists, just for those who aren't aware, ABS stands for Anti-Bullying Specialist? Are they providing in-service training of the school safety team members? Are they providing professional development? Are they given opportunity to go out and attend training sessions on HIV prevention, school climate? Are our school leaders being trained? I actually will be at the August 6th administrative retreat to review some of the anti-bullying initiative and the law. One of the things that we're finding out is, every meeting that I do go to that's sponsored by the state, I'm always learning something new about this new, the new laws. This will be the third year that it's been implemented. The fourth element talks about curriculum and instruction. Are we providing students with ongoing age-appropriate instruction according to the Core Curriculum Conference Standards? Are we observing Week of Respect, which is the first week in October? All right? One more, Ian, thank you. The fifth element talks about personnel. Are the anti-bullying specialists appointed by the principals? Are they meeting with the anti-bullying coordinator, me? Since this, since January 2011, 2012, I'm sorry, I've met with the anti-bullying specialist 11 times. Are the school safety teams meeting at each school? They have, they're required to meet a minimum of twice per year. They have exceeded that already. The sixth element, school-level HIV incidence reporting procedures. Are we following the procedures of reporting HIV new cases as well as prior cases? Seventh element, are we notifying parents? Are we completing the investigation within 10 days as required by the law? Are we preparing our written reports, which are required by law to be sent to Mr. Lazovic within two days of completing the investigation? Last, the HIPAA reporting. Do we have a procedure that staff could report verbally as well as written? Ian? I know there's a lot of numbers up here, but this is the breakdown according to the elements. All the elements are primarily the same. However, there is a difference in Core Element 1. Just as a reminder, what Core Element 1 is, talks about the programs, approaches, and initiatives. I think one thing that we need to be aware of, this is the Nutley School District HIV initiative. However, our goal, and we know that each school is separate and distinct, so one school may be doing something different from another school based upon patterns, trends, or what's going on with students. For Core Element Number 1, one of the concerns that we saw, myself as an anti-bullying specialist, was the assessment of programs. Majority of the schools felt that we met that partially. One of the things that the state is requiring and is looking into is data. How are we data-driven? And one of the things that we need to improve on is conducting surveys for students. Student and staff assessments of the programs, the HIV prevention programs. Even evaluation reports, if we bring a program in, let's evaluate it. So we have a better understanding that our information is driven by data. Also, for Core Element Number 1, one of the things that we've already worked on already this past school year is that myself as a student, in addition to being the anti-bullying coordinator, I am the student assistance coordinator for Walker Middle School. Myself, Mrs. Caselli, we're student assistance coordinators. Mrs. Pennell, who's the SAC at Lincoln School. One of the things that we have discussed, and Mr. Lazovic, Ms. Valani, is that all the counselors will be under Ms. DeVilio. So, instead of having different, I guess, frames of references as a SAC, student assistance, and guidance, we will all be working under her, under the Director of Guidance. With Mrs. DeVilio, we already talked about, one of the things that we're gonna do with this upcoming school year is research a K-12 character education program. As well as working with Mr. Odell and the Strategic Planings Character Committee, which is also working on researching a character education program as well. So we're all gonna be working together. But as you can see, primarily, all the other elements are primarily the same. Under the Core Element, it talks about the number, the maximum. I think as, all the schools felt that we primarily met all of the required needs. Do we exceed them? We have not exceeded them yet. It's early, and we are looking, always constantly to improve in our HIV initiative. This will be the third year that the law has been implemented. The school grade, maximum of 75. As you can see, we're primarily averaging out anywhere from high 50s to low 60s. I'm also part of the Bergen County Anti-Bullying Coordinators Association and speaking to a lot of representatives of Bergen County schools. We don't have one in SS County yet, that a lot of other districts are in that high 50s to low 60s range. Questions, Janora? Ian? Thank you. Once, the deadline is August 15th. Once our, once our ratings are Board of Ed approved, we will be electronically submitting these grades into the website, into the Department of Ed's web-based system. Mr. Lazovic will certify them. Also, there is a statement of assurances that, basically it's a check-off, that indicates that our district has followed all the procedures set forth by the Department of Education. All right? Once again, the public reporting, in addition to being here this evening. Hopefully, by the first week in October, which initiates the Week of Respect, our district and each school will be receiving a grade by the Department of Ed. I, I'm under the assumption it's the same grade that you may see here. Within 10 days of receiving notice of our grades, each school's grade should be posted on their school's website, as well, the district, the district grade should be posted on the district's homepage. As well as, I believe sometime in November, I will be presenting last year's, this past school year's statistics on HIV, and at that time, I will review the grades at a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapello. Any questions? Any questions? All right, before we proceed, if your people in the hallway would like to come in, there are some seats up in here, whether they're happy to stand. Just take time, everybody, to come in. Anybody else who's to come in? There's plenty of room, come on in, make yourselves, a couple, a little more round, a little bit. If you like, you can come up the middle. If there's, if you're up the middle steps, I'll take you upstairs to the, to get a better view of what's gonna happen.
Mr. Kapello, thank you very much, as always. Thanks for your team. I am excited to know what's gonna happen as we become part of one department. We're gonna focus our efforts, we're really looking for a K-12 student support program so that every year, we have a certain program that happens for kindergarten students and parents, for middle school, for high school. I really appreciate everything you've been doing. Again, we also discussed the idea that, if really the first time we're doing this to all schools, it's nice to see that we did well in comparison, but we're also, we still have room to grow. So thanks again for that. Dr. Schippenhouse and Mrs. Doyle Moreno are here. We've been talking back and forth how to present special services at the department, and really, it is too much for one presentation, so what we've done is broken it up into pieces. We'll be having some regular presentations, as they will talk about. But again, what we're trying to do is focus on what's most to me as Dr. Schippenhouse and Mrs. Doyle Moreno, congratulations again. This is our first summer with our team, and they're gonna be presenting on a fairly regular basis, so this is the first one. So welcome and thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Mr. Lazovic asked me when I actually first came, if I could, in addition to overseeing the department and the daily, everyday running of it, if I could also assess. So, oh, Ian, if you would, sorry, I'm used to having the, I know everyone here is, here, here about our special services department, right? It's wonderful, do you see the turnout we got? Okay, so the purpose of, tonight, what we're gonna present is the purpose of the review, an outline of the review, a little bit about our parent advisory committee that we're gonna be doing, and then Mrs. Doyle Moreno will talk about the update on our integrated preschool program, which we're very, very excited about. I am, I'm in the process of reviewing, but we got so bogged down with the hiring process, which we're, tonight you will be board approving quite a few. So, we weren't really ready to present the review, so I thought what I would do is at least give you an outline of what will be presented next month. The purpose of the review was just to look at what was good and what was, not what was good or bad, but, you know, what we were doing correct. And I will have some accommodations at the very beginning of the review next time, because we have an awful lot of good stuff going on in this district. First and foremost, the staff. The staff here is just incredible. The community, the parents are so involved, it's just, it's just such a pleasure to even work here. Everybody's on the right wavelength, we all want to continue to be in compliance and move forward. So, in that vein, we're actually looking at different, looking at restructuring. Once the hiring is completed, as I said, we're in the middle of it, then we can look at restructuring. You can move it, Ian, because Mr. Lazovic asked me to look at our way appropriately structured with support staff and administration, and to meet the needs of students. So, putting on my previous State Department monitoring hat, I was able to see initially when I came that we were very, very short CST members, which then impacts the individual team member's ability to case manage with the parents, to write IEPs, to do follow-up. Teachers are kind of all over. Special education is very fluid, because depending on the population and where the population might be at any given time is where we're gonna have to have the teachers and where we're gonna have to have the paraprofessionals. So we really need to look at where it's structured, how fluid we are at moving, and then also our paraprofessionals. So next month, I will actually have a specific outline of, I mean, specific data to support our structuring. Staffing, as I said, we do need to restructure. We have a couple of case managers at the elementary level who are currently case managing. We have one case managing 90 and one case managing 85, which is absurd. Really, it's about 40, 45 to 50 that they should be case managing. So with the new hires, we have some retirements, we have to do replacements, the change in population and programs. For instance, we had an autistic class at our middle school, which had a teacher and two paraprofessionals. For some reason, this coming year, the 13, 14th school year, and the following year, we are not going to have any students for that class. So, we're gonna have to look at moving the teacher and the aides. That's the nature of the, you know, so I know that people get very building-specific, but if the needs change, then we have to be fluid enough to be able to put it where the needs are. I was asked to look at if we have the appropriate number of staff for the students, where they're placed. And, so we're gonna be looking, Mrs. Doyle Moreno will be working with the paraprofessionals. I think that was, in my three months that I was here, I just could not get to the paraprofessionals because I was dealing with child study team members and with teachers, nurses as well. And, so I did not meet in those three months with the paraprofessionals, which I felt really very bad about by the end of the year. But with Mrs. Doyle Moreno, that is what she will be doing. We have 84 paraprofessionals, so she will be able to really keep in touch with them and meet with them. And that falls into what our training is gonna be, which is really the exciting part. When you're in education, we're here to teach and to train, and so I was asked to look at what kind of training we need, what kind of training the administration needs. I know, I spoke with Mr. Lazovic, I want us all to be on a common language. We have, in some buildings, they refer to a resource center pull-out class as one thing, and in other building, and it's resource center pull-out. So we need to all be on the same, have a common language, which will help us with our placement, will help us with our planning. Some of the training we know we're gonna need is in-class support. I think we talked, I talked a little last time, and Mrs. Doyle Moreno will talk about it. Preschool standards, we wanna have standardized curriculum at the preschool level. So you can turn it, Ian. So that's the fun stuff. So we'll be back next month, and we will specifically tell you what we're gonna be doing. Mr. Lazovic also asked me to look at a compliance for the department. And as happened, we were in the middle of special education monitoring. Now, we passed everything except for our speech-language area. They were not happy with the way some of the speech-language IEPs were being written. I spoke with the monitors, again, I was part of the Northern Region Monitoring Team when I worked for the State Department, and I said, you know, "Why are you coming out on June 27th? You were just here in March, it's gonna take us a while, once we change it, to then have it reflected in the IEPs that it actually has been changed." But they said, "Well, we're scheduled to come, so we're gonna come." And they came, it was great, it was good seeing them, we caught up on a lot of things. And they went through a lot of IEPs, and again, because we didn't have enough time elapsed for different IEPs, it was more the same. So there's one area in this speech IEP, the, what we call the CLAP, which is really current ed status. They felt that they were just written too uniformly, so they want a little more variation in the writing of it, which is not, it's not a big deal to do. So when the speech therapists come back in June, we'll have a training. And the monitors still, it's over a month, have not sent us a letter to that effect, but they said they would probably come back in January or February, which will give us that six months to be able to change it and have it reflected in the IEPs. So that's where we are with the compliance. Other than that, we're in pretty good shape, just overwhelmed in trying to keep up with the timelines. But again, I'll have more specific data next month for that. We do have to have a parent advisory group. Our code does state, the special education code, and we do everything by the special education code. It states that each district Board of Education shall ensure that a special education parent advisory group is in place in the district to provide input, ooh, thought I took that to input out, to the district on issues concerning students with disabilities. So in that process, we're getting a letter together that we will send to all the parents, inviting them to be part of this parent advisory group. We will have to do it by lottery with criteria, because we want a representation of parents from each building, from preschool, from at a district. So we will kind of get those groups together and then pick out so that parents have a fair chance to be on it. Generally, they're on it for a two-year period. It's a two-year term usually, and once we know who the parents are gonna be, we will notify them, and then we will provide a list of meetings for the entire year. Generally, you do the meetings, some meetings in the evening, some meetings during the day, so that everyone, you know, if there's childcare issues or work issues, everyone can actually get there. They usually last about an hour, but I've seen some of these meetings go two and a half, three hours. We order pizza sometimes, it goes so long. And we're going to ask if we could have a Board of Education liaison there as well at the meetings. And that's really to get the input of what's going on, because, you know, from a parent's perspective, because sometimes what we as administrators think is going on, sometimes the parents come in and say, "Did you know that?" And it's just important for us to have that perspective as well. You can turn it. Okay, Mrs. Doyle Moreno is gonna, she's gonna be actually supervising the preschool integrated program, so she'll bring you up to date on what's going on with that.
Hi, good evening. Our preschool integrated program here in the Nutley Public Schools has come to fruition, which is just a beautiful thing for students with disabilities, working alongside students without disabilities. So we're really pleased to offer this program for the 2013-2014 program. Can I see there, no, we're there, I'm sorry. The program will serve the needs of three- and four-year-old preschoolers who require special education services with general education preschool students. It will also be aligned with the New Jersey Department of Education Preschool Teaching and Learning Standards. And I know Dr. Schippenhouse had, had worked on these at the last Board of Ed meeting. But there are four preschool standards for approaches to learning, standards 9-1 through 9-4. And more information can be found at the website that I've attached, that brings you directly to the Department of Ed, Education's website. The integrated preschool program will be held at Radcliffe Elementary School, and there will be an AM session at this time. But depending on the response, and we're already getting phone calls, two of the department asking, "Can my child be enrolled?" If we have a large enough response, a PM class may be implemented as early as January. So that would be something to look forward to as well. The cost for the program is $3,000 for the school year, which can be paid in monthly installments. The child must be toilet-trained, and parents must provide transportation to and from the school. The program will be advertised in the local newspaper and on our website. As of tomorrow, it will be going up with board approval, of course. Regular education enrollment is limited, and in most cases, will be determined by a lottery system. There will be eight slots available on the regular ed side at this time. Students with special needs, however, will be placed according to their IEP, their individual education plan. Students eligible for the lottery must be between three and four years of age by October 1st, and may not turn five prior to the same date. The advertisement, the community notification that will be going out will be located on our special services website, which I've included there, and in the local paper, the Nutley Sun. The application for lottery can also be found on our website, and must be received by the Special Education Services Department by August 22nd. And then the following day, the lottery will be held. If you are notified that your child has been chosen to attend this program beginning of September, you will need to download a registration packet that is on our Nutley Schools website. All registrations must be done in person and by appointment only. And I believe that would be with Ms. Boyle and Mr. Ferrara. And that's, that's it?
That was it?
That was it. I had, yeah, the next steps. That's it. So we're really pleased to have this program, and it has come to fruition. So I think it'll be a great experience on both ends, for both sides. Dr. Schippenhouse?
Yes, just, the next steps are, we're gonna be looking at the teacher child study team and paraprofessional placements for the 2013-14 school year. And then within a week or two, once we make them, which will be this week, hopefully, you approve them all tonight. Then we will let the staff know, we'll send letters or phone calls out to the teachers and child study team and paraprofessionals if they're moving. And there will be some movement, it's just the nature of the beast. You know, if you have more students that require the one-on-one in one building, there's a class no longer in another building, that we're just gonna have to shift. That's the way it goes. Child study team will have to shift also, because we're trying to get case management numbers down to 40, 45, or 50, which is just reasonable. Then, we also, for the remainder of this month, we need to be planning the trainings and in-services and meetings. We have real-time coming in, that's our database. We need to get consistent with that, that all the team members are using the correct, and the, it needs a lot of work, our special ed database, part of real-time. We need to get trainings like Handle with Care. We need meeting agendas, we'd like to have all the meetings for all the child study teams, we'll be meeting with teachers by buildings, and we'd like to have that for the year. by buildings, and we'd like to have that for the year laid out for when everyone returns in September. And again, we do have the monitoring we still have to deal with. Prepare the actual data to the board as the outline indicated. And, again, we have to get the chair and advisory group going, because we'd like to have that first meeting in September. And we'll be doing the preschool lottery on August twenty-second. And then notifying parents that their child was picked. Again, and the preschool lottery, by the way, is also, it's a true, it will be a lottery. I mean, we will actually fold the names up and put them in a bowl, and someone will be pulling them out for the eight slots. But we, there will be times, perhaps, when there is less than eight, because, for instance, we have a twin that might need to attend it as the general ed. So, there might be exceptions once in a while, not often, but just very rare. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Schippenhouse. And I know a lot of us are excited about you being here, Mrs. Doyle being on board with us. And certainly, this preschool is something that I and a lot of board members have been looking for for quite a while, so we're, we're excited about it also.
Great.
Are there any questions on the board members? Thank you. Mr. Lazovic?
Good evening. There was the, since our last meeting, so a great deal has gone, and again, updating both the public and the board. Before I start, we do have seats over here to my left, if you don't wanna stand in the back. You pick a couple of seats up and sit. I'll wait. We had our board retreat. It's gonna be very, I want to thank all the board members for making time. I know it was a long evening, we covered a great deal. As for my, the board, please make sure you review the board goals, and the board's self-assessment email me by next Friday to top the gaps and recommendations for amendments to the board goals for two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. Honoring the team, welcome Mr. Dancheck Martin, and I would like to thank Paul Ferrer and Mr. Klein, for the extra services we provided going through both the self-assessment and evaluation process, to finalize evaluation, and then working with the academic committee as we always do on the super text goals for thirteen, fourteen. All the goals, timeline-wise, here in my, the board, we want all the goals on the August agenda for approval, and some of them do have to be submitted to our September, September tenth, we wanna make sure we get those done. I had a meeting with Commissioner Rogers, who came in from public health, he's working on the initiative with the health department, and wants to partner with the schools to have a local event for students and parents, bringing in doctors, nurses, and a number of community organizations, make people aware of what's going on, and aware of the resources that are in Nutley when it comes to health education. He wants to partner with the schools, so we're reaching out to our nurses, so we started that conversation. Updates on the ad hoc committees, and I'm not sure if Mr. Square or Mr. Bencheck Martin was making updates on them, but just again, from my perspective, reminding the board, the ad hoc committee employee, letters have been sent to the county, the county, the local community group, they've worked out, trying to move them out of schools for the safer environment and not to be destruction. As far as the law enforcement committee, I know there is an update coming on that, but I met with Mrs. Ramens and Architect on Friday. We're having necessary in-district administrative meetings with administration tomorrow, so that we can sit down and have more updates, but we're gonna have to sit at our committee level relatively quickly if we're moving forward and meet the timeline that we discussed. So, those will all be happening, and ask for further from the board members, because we wanna make sure we have everything involved in the planning, because all of us is greatly smarter than any one of us. On the academics side, I'm happy to announce that we've become storage areas of districts. We received, well, how many pallets, sorry? Fifty-one? Fifty-one pallets of our math supplies, so congratulations to all the teachers who are involved, on the committee of parents who were involved, certainly Miss Valani and Miss Martin. But they are here, and we are going to be distributing to the buildings. A huge investment on the part of board, so thank you for the time, for the resources, Miss Yamas working through the budget. We were able to run, not only the program review, but pilot and materials appropriately, and they are here, so I'm excited. On that end, math was taking a completely different look and feel at the K-12 level as we do it to next year. We also will be providing the trainings, like the ones that we started professional development. Again, part of our strategic plan is that we would never move an important initiative without the appropriate professional development to support that initiative. It's in black and white in our strategic plan, and I'm happy to say that all have instituted positive, and we are, in fact, living by that standard, that professional development will continue into next year. Language arts. The orders for language arts are being finalized, actually, the guiding libraries that we talked about, one per building, will ship this week, and as they're finalizing our classroom libraries, which will ship next week. All materials, again, the data has been confirmed by Scholastic, we'll be in district before August nineteenth, which is the date issued to administrators and teachers. All this together means we even have a completely different look and feel in our classrooms, math and language arts, come, come the opening, come September. We are on, on target, seeing our deadlines. And again, our tier one and tier two trainings, as outlined before, will continue. We're looking as quickly as possible to build tier three and tier four, so that we have every single classroom on a workshop model. And you can see how we can expand that workshop, not just into reading, but into writing, and then beyond language arts. So, that's a plan. The assessment kits that were purchased for all teachers K-two, and the materials that were purchased for, the assessment kits that were going to be assembled, Miss Valani explained during the retreat, have all been ordered, will be coming in again. So, that's gonna allow our teachers to appropriately assess students on a regular basis, to see how they're developing as readers and writers, and so we can tailor instruction on a daily basis to what individual students need. And this is a big push to individualize instruction, give teachers the resources they've been clamoring for, for a while, so that we can assess and use data to drive the instruction, also change the communication with our parents. So, if they understand literacy, literacy development, and where their specific stutter door is, so they can help and partner home, so it truly is a collaborative process where students are being supported twenty-four seven. All teachers are gonna be trained on that, and we'll be leveraging performance matters to help teachers maintain warehouse and analyze that data on a regular basis, and not just in the class, but as teams of teachers. The tool allows us to do that. It also will help us moving forward, so that second grade teachers know a great deal about their incoming students long before they leave first grade. So, literally improves our collaboration as a K-12 district. Talk with professional development. Parent information then. As I talked to the board, we did reach out to our consultant, so Klein was knowing when it's coming in August, but I've been reaching out to the PTOs, finding a great deal of people on vacation. Summer apparently is not the best time, so she has agreed to hold off, and we will have our parent information, I think, in September, right after opening, looking to the PTOs or administrators as we get people coming in, as they do with ready in the year, getting the word up that we have in this session. And we'll, we'll pick a larger area and have everyone who can start the conversation about what we're doing with literacy, social studies. Last piece in academics, science. Again, thank you to Roche, but also to the board, and what we are doing with the budget, we supported the purchase of all K-five science materials. They arrived in district today, actually Friday, Friday, or today. We, we walked over today. They were in the hallway, Mr. Vannion was running around frankly, trying to take care, make sure everything's secure. It was a great deal of information, they're all kits. So, not your stereotypical, well, we bought textbooks to teach out of. Again, my phrase, which I was taught to districts prior, is that when you're doing science, you have to get their, you have to roll their sleeves, and within their academic things, you don't just read about them, you have to do them. And based on the success of our pilot, the kids are filled again. And we're looking to expand that K-five across the board. So, those kits are here. Mr. Vannion, Miss Valani have already developed the staff members' plan for K-five professional development that we're receiving multiple days. And again, they will not be asked to teach any of the science program until they have initial professional development. The way we're scheduled, science and social studies are paired in our schedule, they'll be beginning, they'll be beginning the year of social studies, which we're familiar with, and moving to science after professional development. So, again, trying to make sure that while we do wanna move forward, we're hoping forward without the appropriate supports and things. Special services, you've heard the update again tonight, and just to reiterate, special services of departments constantly in flux. You don't know, you don't know the population from one year to the next, even if you have static students, those students are developing and growing and reacting to our program, which is why you have to generalize meetings and things change. As things change, we have to adapt our department to meet the needs of the existing population. And that is something that we're working very hard to do. We've been playing catch-up, and we wanna move ahead into the year. I wanna commend the administrators and the Chouse team members, the building administrators, of course, that they're supporting. I've been a great deal of work to this point, and I really do think we're starting to see traction from the secretaries in the department to the teachers on the ground, trying to really build a collaborative, coordinated effort to support the students in ways we have in the past. Staff thing, we are still hiring teachers. We have the process, and again, I've been trying to get to the administration, we thank you for him to be in. Sometimes our timing is, we're trying to make sure we get everyone as quickly as possible. We're here with some surprise, as you know, at the very end of the year, but happy to report that we are addressing this, and a case in point, we're appointing with your approval, a role for each teacher. So, we're trying to make this forward. Also, happy to report that we will be in front of the municipal principal later on this evening, and we'll talk more about that when we get there. Our HESPA data, it's ongoing piece, but again, to update the board our cycle on data, scores were downloaded earlier July. You know, Mr. Rosati's here and has been working. Thank you, Chris, for the transition to a new position that the board approved, versus this started. She's been in district a number of days with Miss DiVillo. She actually spent almost a full day with Mr. Rosati, who's laughing, because he knows the work that's, that's in front of her. But we're currently waiting, our cycle two data, which will be available later in the summer. And then, as always, that'll be coupled with all our student performance data for a public presentation before the board and anyone who's interested. NJ Oster, I'm gonna boil that together. We received our AP scores, waiting excitedly for those logged in. They will be part of a larger presentation, but as a general summary, I've been working with Mr. Williams and Miss DiVillo since we got the scores, to go through the specific scores for each class, each teacher, each department, we'll be working with our coordinators. We took a very different approach to advanced placement this year, that's going to continue to a heightened level next year. Overall summary for how we did though, we had more students in high school in AP classes, we had more students taking AP tests, and we had a higher percentage of students who were in classes taking the test. All of those are good. On top of that, though, I'm tired of saying that we had more students passing the test, and a higher percentage of students passing the test than we've ever had. And so, that is positive as well. There are certain things, again, that's general data, how we present them course by course. And again, what we do when we look, is we sit down with specific teachers, what the problem did happen with everything, do we know appropriately? This is our first year with performance matters, depending on the course in the department, we have different levels of success, but as we move forward, we'll see more of the same. And again, I know it was one of our, our twelve, thirteen goals, and I hope to see it continue as thirteen, fourteen goal. The big piece I'd like to make again with public here is that success in advanced placement has less to do with the advanced placement classes than it does with the preparation that comes for all the years prior to advanced placement. We need to get the word out to parents of kindergarten students, let alone high school students, that they need to be talking to their sons and daughters about this appropriately, and we can help do that. We need to be thinking about taking the most rigorous schedule possible in our schools, because at the end of the day, you don't need to major in physics to have taken an AP physics class. It just provides more opportunities for our students, and that's, that's the end game for us. When our students leave here at twelfth grade, the idea is that they have the most opportunities available to them, and that they're able and willing to choose whichever opportunities they have. They, they think that suit them. So, I'm excited about the AP scores. Is it where we wanna end up? No, but it definitely was a good step forward. Submissions to state reports, again, just to update the board. Mr. Levine, Mrs. Alessio, and Mr. Veemeister, work all year long to keep us compliant with the state reporting. We have to make sure, as we've been cited in the past, that we hit all of these important days. I'm happy to say that we are currently exactly where we need to be. Summer is a big time for updating. Right now, we're working school report card, our county districts and school report, and our graduate report, but we're on, on schedule to meet all of our deadlines as appropriate. And the good news is, every time we go through this, especially now having real-time here a year, what we're finding is the data keep becoming more and more clean. And that's what we want. Our first submission does not come back, it never varies, it comes back exactly, and that's what we're looking for. So, hopefully that, that we see is progress as well, and we do hear credits out. I wanna congratulate Mrs. Sejja, her staff, her minions, and the academic booster club for another successful year at Let's Learn. I like the fact that the board office looked at where it is in a sense, I get to go there. I got to see all the different classes, our staff members working with those kids. They were happy, they were excited, they were engaged, they were learning, and that's terrific. We're a twelve-month learning institution, and that's another example of that. So, again, thank you to everyone. I was there to see some of the drama presentations in their final week, kids up on stage performing, fantastic, and was there for the open house on, it was past Friday, where they had their slideshow. And the parent turnout, we filled at our twenty. It's a fantastic program, I'd like to see. Already talked to Mrs. Sejja, who commented on how she transitioned the evaluation process we're using in the district for teachers and administrators, actually to Let's Learn in a way where they're being reflected, and has a number of things she right away wants to sit down and discuss for next year. So, I'm looking forward to that discussion. Upcoming events, our administrative retreat is next week. I can't believe we're here already, but all of our administrators will be together, six, seven, and eight, to make sure that we're set and ready to go for a successful thirteen, fourteen. New teacher orientation, working with our administrators, our staff, the association, August twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth. And as promised, we'll talk about it a little bit later, but upcoming, we'll be scheduling a gift from the talented information night, for most likely the last week of August. We'll be getting information out to all parents, not just parents of students who've already been identified, because again, we're moving toward an enriching for all model, so that will be happening. Q-SAC reevaluation, we have not, as Dr. Schippenhouse also reported, we have not gotten our letter back yet from our Q-SAC reevaluation, but Miss Valani and I met with members of the academy office. Based on their initial feedback, we're exactly where we need today, again, our Q-SAC, it happened on the eleventh, my first two weeks in, and we started there, which was a good start in terms of getting some outside feedback. It seems as if we have addressed every issue that was highlighted as something out of compliance. We won't get the final letter until after the August board meeting, because they have to wait for two final approvals, which we can't do until then. So, hopefully we will get that letter before the end of August, but still looking for some good news there. We've talked a lot about professional development, I wanna highlight an important piece, we were approving a revised revision to the calendar again. And what we've been doing in pieces is working with the LPC, and I'm sorry it's happening in three stages, but we didn't wanna rush and do everything at once. We wanna make sure we get the calendar out in a timely way, so parents and staff can make plans. We'll be adding three single-session days to the school year, and I'm hoping that they go as planned, in which case they will be recurring every single year. We have so much going on, we've actually sat down, Mrs. Christian Settle is here, but Miss Valani, myself, we've actually mapped out the entire year of professional development as is. And I can tell you, with our change in schedule, with the change in the opening and the close of school, with these extra days, there's still just not enough time to get to everything that we need to get to. We wanna make sure special education is included in our professional development, not just for special education teachers, but for the entire district. The new evaluation system, the math series, the language arts philosophy, our science piece, there's a great deal going on district. It's an exciting time, but that's why we're making these changes. Revision will be posted on the website as soon as it's approved by the board, so I want parents to understand, because I do understand, that it can be burdensome, we work, there are other things going on, while school certainly isn't daycare, it's difficult sometimes to plan around a revised schedule. We're trying to get them out as quickly as possible. The dates are January seventeenth, March twentieth, and April twenty-third. We try to space them in, so that we have professional development going on every single month, and in this way, this helps us continue that trend. Again, Thursday isn't till January, and we're reporting it now, so that parents in the community have time to adjust their schedules and make appropriate choices. Going back to get to the talented, Miss Valani, I sat down with Mrs. Woods-Murphy, who we appointed. She did actually attend the conference, we discussed, and then came back with a wealth of information, able to assess where we are and where we need to go. Based on those pieces, she's putting together a comprehensive presentation. Couple of key things, number one, we're not losing any of the program that we've had in the past. We must still be identifying students. Those students will still have not only the pullout time, but access to those after-school activities that they've come to love and the district has come to support. All those things will be going on. The major change is that she may be working directly with teachers to ensure what hasn't been going on, which should have been, which is that the ninety-five percent of the week where they're in their general education classes, they're getting differentiated instruction that's rigorous for them. Basically, new math series, the new language arts model, and Miss Woods-Murphy's support of these specific teachers, the ideas we're giving teachers even more support in reaching of these specific teachers, the ideas we're giving teachers even more support in reaching these individual students. So when she's working with them on pullout, she has more information to go back and sit with the individual teachers to have conversations about what's going on in class. Again, 5% of the week is not accepted, 100% of the week is accepted, and that's what we're working towards to get the instruction. So we will be published, once we finalize that date, we'll get it out, not just directly to parents, but to the whole community. So please look for that. Summer strategist program began July 1st. Highlighted students who need extra support or support continued through the summer have been working with our staff, the language arts and math every single day. The sessions go through August 2nd. We were in the high school again, seeing some of the teachers at work. And again, our job is to make it fun for the kids, and indeed, if we weren't in Milwaukee and better prepared for September than they would. So 12-month learning institution, another advantage of that. Last piece was just again, our model classrooms. Going back to Ms. Klein, we've worked with the teachers, professional development, since the summer started. So we've had teachers in here, even actually before technically the summer month started, every single teacher made themselves available for math training over the course of three days after the end of school. So every single teacher, you can see the commitment of our staff, wanting to make sure that we are prepared for September in ways that we haven't been prepared in the past. We want to keep supporting them, keep encouraging them. Our model classroom training went on for Tier Two. The goal is to catch Tier Two up as much as possible with Tier One, so that Tiers One and Two are working separately but together through the course for 13, 14 years. So we see guided reading, we see appropriate assessment, we see level libraries. And my big hope just from the get-go is parents can walk in, and students will walk in, to classrooms that look and feel differently, that has the kind of classrooms our teachers have been trying to build on their own, and now with district support, they have the appropriate resources. And remember, while not every teacher K5 or K8 is involved in Tier Number Two yet, every single teacher will be receiving the resources as we roll out, so that we can kind of accelerate[598.25]
I've raised it worse than we usually thought, so we have to go through him for a long time. Unfortunately, the architect takes some time to do their studies and then gives us more information to bring out.
And we're going to use general funding for that too?
Yeah, we reworked the budget. One of the commitments was to make sure that we were appropriately maintaining the facilities that are still in our community use. In order to do that, we reworked the budget for that. We have my add where we can afford them to make this repair. And again, we've held some of this constantly towards the videos that you observe and senior education. It's all existing money we have at.
Mr. President, earlier this year, the board approved the retention of a consultant under the guise of the sixth grade shift. Okay, have we heard from that consultant yet?
We are waiting to meet with them. I think to get some more feedback. Remember that?
We have.
We don't have one.
The final reports through high school, who are working on that piece of it?
I could.
He's presented on our K situation. That information was used by the architect when we were taking the music. There will be a presentation that the last piece of was me asking the folks in high school.
Well, I raise that because it would seem to me if we need to do any consideration for that, that would be a priority even over our old and decrepit breach unless some of us declare the breach as a new safety and security hazard and unusable to future.
That is not the case because we let them continue the way they're going certainly would be the case.
I realize that, but my point is, are we going to have enough money in our capital reserves, our general fund, to do whatever we need to do to effect whatever this consultant says we want to do?
We're going to have to look into it once we get around the whole picture. What we're trying to do is look at the entire district and not only.
Shouldn't we wait then before we go forward with the breach?
We want to make sure that we're taking care of all of our services and this is something we have to address.
I know, but if there's not enough money, we're going to have to make decisions on what's going to be spent on the plan and we say.
And we're not supposed to adjust the board on resolution items. Mr. Thomas, you're still up?
Mr. President, just note that in violation of board policy in academic resolution number one, we're retroactively improving the use of the facilities, including some of the smart batteries in March. Number one, the field trip of students.
Who was it?
Yeah. Send them to the back of the college in March. Unless that was supposed to be March one, two thousand fourteen or not.
Are you okay, sir?
Yes.
Just got a change on. Okay, Mr. Thomas, you have that. Then we can answer these questions. This one, please.
Those are field trips for the music department, beginning in August going through to the national headquarters.
Well, I also noticed on the personnel level, Mr. Ackman is returning a bowling coach.
I can also question that, okay? I don't know if that's going to, is that still in effect?
That's what I have.
Yeah, probably still is in effect.
Okay, great.
I was curious about it also. Any other people wish to adjust the board on resolution item? If not, Ms. Nancy, can you have academic resolutions, please?
Um, yes, Mr. President, to academic resolutions, one through six, with the change to the middle high school field trip under item number one, changing the dates to two thousand fourteen, in March and May.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cook, the second, the wall poll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Jada?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Spazado, will you take administration one through three, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I owe administration resolutions one to three as written.
Wall poll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Solaire, will you take administration number four, please?
First, I'd like to, our committee, there's a committee on the school security polling locations, just myself, Ms. Dancheck-Martin, and Mr. Klein, I'd like to thank them for this work, and Ms. Dancheck especially helping with this resolution drafted for tonight, surely set in the right direction for the security of schools. I wear as a pre write music for effective learning student academic success is a safe and secure school environment, whereas violence poses a direct material threat to the safety of our children and their ability to succeed in academically, whereas other school districts in this county have been subject to horrific active violence resulting in injury to deaf children, adolescents, and school staff, whereas tragedies such as those in West Kentucky at Columbine High School in Colorado, and most recently in New Connecticut underscored the need for meaningful action to address access to our schools and security, whereas schools are actively engaged in developing security plans in the attempt to prevent any similar tragedies, and whereas president of schools in public school district are utilized as polling locations for elections, which diminishes the safety of students within those buildings, requiring the school district to either close schools on days of elections or incur substantial costs associated with increasing security on election days, where the use of the school buildings for public election causes a financial burden to the school district and substantial disruption to instruction, whereas the NUP Board of Education is committed to removing the polling locations in our schools, is on this twenty ninth day of July, two thousand thirteen, hereby resolved, NUP Board of Education requested our state leaders identify and implement meaningful actions to relocate polling locations within school districts in furtherance of school safety goals. We had further resolved that if the polling locations continue to be located within schools, buildings, school districts should be reimbursed for the cost of security measures as permitted by NJSA nineteen colon eight dash two, and we had further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Governor Chris Christie, New Jersey Senator Ronald Rice, New Jersey Assemblyman Robert Pugh, New Jersey Assemblywoman Cleo Tucker, and New Jersey School Boards Association and the National School Boards Association. Thank you.
Second, Dan, also.
Any discussion? I would personally like to thank the committee for the opportunity to know my feelings about this, and I think we need to pursue this until we get a result. Thank you. A roll poll, Mr. Mr. Cook.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Cook, will you take resolutions, uh, finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move financial resolutions, one through twenty-two, with resolution two being modified to delete the use of the high school facility by tripping the slash the family club at this time.
Discussion.
I'd like to squander everyone's attention to resolution number twenty-two and the three thousand dollar donation from Princeton University in honor of Dean Spickensky, who we're being honored as a teacher of the year.
Wall poll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Spazado, will you take county resolution, uh, personnel, please?
Mr. President, I move personnel resolution one, with the removal of the five rated sport coach salary there until the board can get further explanation.
Second, discussion?
Just discuss, so everyone understands. We didn't have an opportunity to meet already, so you guys don't have the opportunity to understand what that's about, so once we meet, which is Wednesday, we will give you guys an update, put this back on the agenda. Uh, well, it's.
Thank you. Also, with the agenda of personnel is the promotion of our middle school principal, Ms. Egan, who I know is here somewhere. I give her dedication, look forward to working with you, it's going to be a good challenge. Thank you very much. Any more discussion? Roll poll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Thank you.
In this section, we allow, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have intended. Mr. Cook there?
Yes, Mr. President, I move, then the resolution number twenty-three, depository of school funds, and number twenty-four, petty cash funds.
Thank you. Roll poll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaczynski?
Yes. Okay. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school who they advise. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each question shall be limited to three minutes, and we actually try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. I'll pick the first question from the audience.
I'm sorry, clerk, we're talking to spokesperson for the NUP Academy Network. Um, I, first of all, I want to thank the board and Mr. Lasbit for hiring Mrs. Egan. She is fabulous, and we're really, really excited because she's a really great specialized friendly person, and I know that was one of the concerns I shared with you, so thank you, and we're really looking forward to having you at my place next time. Um, I do have a couple of questions in regards to the presentation that Dr. Shippin has had. She was talking about a parent advisory meeting. Now, I know that we had started one last July, um, it was Mr. Lasbit had a twin, Donnie Bolton, and she had asked Kimberly Donnie, with another mom, Joanne Sarah Lala, and myself, and we were working towards just bringing that together. I'm just a little confused as to why that's now being expanded? Is that CPAC being expanded? How's that?
If you remember, I think it's my first meeting with Miss Bolton, well, the fact we didn't have the CPAC as appropriate, um, when we hired our previous director, one of his first pieces was to put that together, and I understand that that's how it was done. Um, as Dr. Shippin asked, came in and met, she'd been to almost every meeting of those, because that's more than a group that meets technically on that night. Um, what you can notice, we didn't actually follow the procedure rolled out by the state. So we're not disbanding, she'd actually, I think, already been contacted, Miss Bolton. Um, but we have to kind of recreate that group, in a way what we're doing is extending it. They're going to have more regular meetings, they're going to be more set agenda, and the biggest piece actually comes from feedback from the UN, Miss Bolton said, by having board meetings on, we automatically then have a presentation or update of the board meeting on, to be exact, along that way. So it's not disbanding so much as a realization in line with the state policy.
Okay, so we'll hear about this. So what?
She's going to advertise all that information to be extremely public, we're trying to get as much input and cooperation as we can.
So the same people that were on the committee, they can reply to the?
Hundred percent, yeah.
And I'm confused, like, does Dr. Shippin ask, pick people on the committee?
No, she said lottery. So we don't physically pick, it's not a, why no Terry Plies, we bring Terry in, it's, um, everyone in certain categories goes into all the ways she's talking, and then they serve two interns.
Two interns, okay. Um, I do have a question in regards to the summer program, the extended year program. Uh, there was a question on whether or not there were field trips for the children, especially our children. Uh, there was a question that had come to my attention, and when a parent had, um, she was told that there were no field trips, and when she went on to learn about why there wasn't, she was told, a new director moved. I was just wondering, I know, I know, that's why I'm here. Um, I was just wondering, how does that apply? Does that?
I can't, I wish I had more information for you specifically, I can't say, I wasn't aware that it was a conversation about S Y and field trips. Um, what I can tell you is that, um, it's not a new director move, it's, we have a new director, but we're following the state's rules. Um, so I could get more information on that, too.
And one other thing, uh, in regards to special ed, uh, there, we did have a meeting about a couple of weeks ago, no, actually, it was about a couple of months ago, and it was a special ed meeting, uh, IEP meeting, that didn't go as well, and Dr. Shippin was there, and I was there, and you have to understand, at IEP meetings, the district is represented by many, many people, the chat study team, teachers, guidance counselors, sometimes principals, sometimes the director, and so it could be a little bit intimidating to the parent. Um, it didn't, suffice to say, that particular meeting didn't end as well, and in the, at the end of the meeting, I must have said something that offended Dr. Shippin, I said it need to be, but I was terrified of her again, that every time I show up at a meeting for council, I will be attending as well. Now, I show up at a lot of meetings, Mr. President, you know, and sometimes I'm there if I have a chance to get out of work, or if I'm there to assist parents, so I just, I really don't want to have that adversarial, um, relationship, and I, I want my parents to feel comfortable. Many, many times, my parents will come to me before the meeting, and they talk about the meeting, and what they can say, and what they can do, and, and it seems to go smoother. My parents are feeling comfortable, and, and, you know, there's a certain amount of respect on both sides, and I just wanted to put that out there, that, um, I really would not like to go down that adversarial road. That's not how.
Either, either, I'm sure. And I'm sure, and it was new to Mrs. Shippin, to you, the program, the way we're trying to move it forward, I'm sure it should be a lot smoother, if not that way, I reckon.
Okay, thank you. I also, just very briefly, I just have something to show, I have copies for everyone, and I just wanted to share with you something that came to my attention. Just for the record, what we're seeing is a copy of a yearbook picture that was taken from, uh, Washington Schools' yearbook, just recently, uh, and there were some concerns in regards to that particular picture. Um, I had spoken to a few of the parents, and one of the parents actually had contacted me and gave me a copy of the picture, uh, but there was a concern about, you know, I'm just reading their reactions, okay, don't call a messenger, it's, they said that it was creepy, they felt that, as you could see, it's, it's a picture with the three classes, the teachers are not present, and Mr. Jones is laying across, um, the bottom of the picture. Okay, so, um, one mother said it was creepy, another mother said it made the hair on the back of her head stand up, another mother said it was uncomfortable and questionable, inappropriate, unprofessional, these were words. One person found it offensive, that he was, they, she clung, thrusting his pelvis, another person said they can't believe that a principal could pose for such a picture, and many, many people were saying, where are the teachers? Now, I just want you to know that evidently, allegedly, this picture was, um, was circulating around pool parties and graduation parties, and it's been a talk, and it's just a concern that we have, because we know that we expect a certain amount of professionalism and from our principals, and we really look up to our principals, and knowing that those students are not going to come here, and they're going to have a very different principal that we see them, we just want to really make sure that professionalism is across the board with everyone. So I'm just sharing that with you, and if you have any questions, you can always get back to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Christopher, C sixty-one, Grand Avenue, uh, you've hit me to it, but I came to thank all of you for your support, because we couldn't run less land, and on behalf of Academy Booster Club, I want to thank all of you. But I'm there that you see, the program wouldn't run without all of your support, and I want to thank you for helping with the building, and seeing Mr. Nicoletti, the custodians, and the maintenance staff that worked around me in the high school, and Mr. Williams and Mr. Francine, who helped me feel at home at the high school, showed me the way around, and Mr. Beem, I've seen, and the tech guys who helped me every time I'd be at a conference. So, thank you all for this.
And I really want to thank you, because I was there quite a few times throughout the month, um, obviously, I am involved with my grandson, but with the other children there, to see our staff being able to clean out one room so that the students could fit into another room, and working around the, the many, many children that we had there, like Mr. Lasbit said, the auditorium on the last day was, was full, with parents, grandparents, very exciting, and, and, um, the classes were outstanding.
Thank you, that's my stat.
They were a great job.
They're lovely teachers, so there you go. But much of the time, we're.
Anyone else wish to address the board? We're, the board of business, sorry, sorry.
Sorry. Professor Jordan, same comment? I just wanted to congratulate the senior, congratulations, well deserved, the incoming principal. I wanted to address the fact that tonight, Ms. Williams, uh, less than you, from what I hear, uh, congratulations, you've done a wonderful job, and, uh, you made a tremendous board member, so we're going to miss you. Uh, the other question, yeah. The other question I have is, I appreciate the fact that we're doing some remediation to these trees in the schools, uh, I believe you said, the Oval, Lincoln School, and Yanacore School, is that correct?
No, the Oval and, and Lincoln School.
What, you said Yanacore School as well?
The trees?
Yeah.
Oh, the trees, yes.
Okay, so Yanacore School as well, which is necessary.
Yes.
Where do we stand after that remediation, those areas, where do we stand as far as our surplus on that two thousand six referendum?
As, as.
What will we have now, what will we have left, after that?
I don't know the exact amount that is done, that's left, Mr. Allen, um, but it is still ongoing, as long as it is ongoing, the resolution money is still out there.
Well, there is a deadline.
As I have mentioned in my report, we're working on the high school booth, and the fire doors on the high school, as the first two projects for that series.
Okay, and then the trees, as far as saying?
The trees have nothing to do with it.
Trees are part of the, okay.
That's just general.
So then, I apologize for that mistake. So after that, do you know what we're going to name this game, is it, Mr. President?
At this point, until we get the cost estimates, we don't, the department's looking at those.
Do we know what the surplus is today?
At one point, five, two point two, to one point two, or five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Amy, this is new two three seven, River. I was just curious about the junior high, and rumors of the sixth grade moving out of the elementary school, and what's truth and what's not, at this point? Teeters.
What's true is that we have a space issue throughout the district.
Right.
What's true is that we have an ad hoc committee that's looking at the space issue. We hired a demographer to give us a direction, moving out five to seven years, we have the architect looking at all of the possible options to help us address the space issue. What's true is that if you're packing students into rooms that are not, not only is that compliant with state regulations, but it's bad for learning. Um, what's true is that the board is looking at the most responsible way to support the best instructional environment at the least cost to the taxpayer and the community, and what's true is that we're currently in process. Um, what is also true, as well as said from being, is that no decisions will be made, and no one will be moved anywhere, without an appropriate process taking place involving all of our stakeholders, including our students, including our parents. Um, I've had great two guys from PTO meetings I've gone to, kind of communicate where we are, what we're doing, um, and we're trying to make sure we bring instructors first, and looking at how we can maintain the character and respect of our buildings, and make sure that they're appropriate, they're kind of learning in a civilized way.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask you another question?
Yeah.
I was also wondering with regards to the elementary school level and the art teachers, and if it's true that two schools are getting full-time art teachers, versus, are you continuing with the four rotating amongst, or are two going to stay?
We're not going with a rotation, we're going with a set schedule, based on the number of classes that we have to offer, though, we only have four teachers for five buildings. Um, the reason for that is even with that schedule, we still have more free periods than we would like. Um, two of the buildings, based on their size, Yanacore and Lincoln, have same teachers, um, Washington School and Mathis School have same teachers, and those two teachers will be sharing the schedule at Grand Garden, but that schedule is set, so students will have the same teacher throughout the year, but the full program under working is one department, so we don't have a rotation of students who are getting.
But Lincoln and Yanacore will have one teacher in their facility, in their building all year?
Yes.
Based on their numbers?
Yes.
And what if, for instance, Washington School's numbers all of a sudden go up because of the masses, massive amount of construction that's going on over in the center street? I mean, you're talking thirty students difference is all, and you always are preaching about all the elementary schools being the same. Now, right off, you, you mark that off your checklist, it can be the same, when not every elementary school has an art teacher angel.
Not every elementary school has the same special, it's the population, and that's appropriate, our teachers and gym teachers as well. When I say the same, I mean, every single student here, regardless of the neighborhood, should be exposed to the same program, which is exactly what's going on. If we have a growth, which we're already planning for, through a planning process, um, we'll address that when the number changes, the same way we're addressing our special search department as the population changes. What I can tell you is that every single student is exposed to the same curriculum the same way, and next year, the way we have in the past, with a consistent teacher.
Okay, and like the same amount of time, I mean, are you still going to bring in that whole enrichment and technology?
The enrichment cycle's never.
Like that section is going to be so good.
We're looking for a different way to do that, now a different specialist, and you look in the SISG and the SORB, on the technology side, um, I want to make sure we're not confusing those who are never joined, while they, they seem to be because of scheduling, our art curriculum and our art instruction has nothing to do with the enrichment cycles, it has nothing to do with the technology, other than they may give, um, one is not substitute for the other.
Well, yeah, we can say that, but everybody feels, still felt like it was substituting art, because the kids weren't getting art.
And we can keep trying to communicate to people, which is what I think we've gotten from the PTOs, as well as the art department, and our specialists for gift and talents, as well as the elementary principals.
Okay.
I want to make sure that they have a rich program. I've been a proponent of all of the arts since my, since my first day, and still believe that, and should be expanded, it's something we want to do.
Okay, I want to show you some.
Sure.
Could you hand me that back? Thank you. What I'd like to show you all, if I could put this here in a minute. This is just, I have four children, and this is just one of my children's projects, so I'd love for you to see. And I'm missing one. This was, my kids were in second grade, my youngest two, this is their stuff from first grade. Push it on. And it's all backed up with the artists and the theory behind it, and here's another one, so two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, pretty quality things that came home from art. And then I have this years. I have three. So you can say that it's keeping the same, but there is definitely something missing when it's one-third of the amount of projects that came home. So I just, you know, I just want to mention that. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
I have another question.
I'm sure.
What's the Carolina, Carolina or Carolina curriculum pilot?
Science curriculum pilot?
Is that the science curriculum? Is that for the junior high? Is that that new integrated one?
It's right.
I don't know.
It's sort of K five.
Okay.
We'll be piloting in seventh grade, see if that's a level, it's why C is going to be completed, not because we're moving anywhere, but because the way they build the series is different at the middle level.
Okay.
And so we'll be piloting that seventh grade, so I'm even more continuing to the middle.
Okay, all right, I was just curious. Thank you.
All right. And all business, a new business coming toward the board. And open. A new business coming forward.
I'd try not to.
I have some new business to report, but it seems, seems to be the way of the broken mill. I've been trying to keep this quiet, but it's like the sixth grade evening going on. Today, tonight's going to be my, and Caroline's out at me. Tonight's my last public meeting as a board member. In the next few weeks and days, I'll be submitting my letter of resignation to Board President Kowinski to let them know that I will be no longer residing in Nutley and I therefore by stature have to step down, which is something I regret deeply because I have, this is the best part.
Pretend we're the jury. And we plead your case.
Because I, I love living in Nutley and I have me. So many connections and relationships that I want to maintain going forward and this is one of them. But unfortunately, I leave, like many of you know, feeling like I didn't get everything done that I wanted to get done. And so, to start, I just wanted to, I was trying to think about what I was going to say today and I think, I'll continue saying, a lot of what I continue saying to members of the public and communicate what we're doing here as a board is, I ran to be on the board because I believe education is the great equalizer. I think our kids can achieve anything they can and a public school education, and that's what makes this country different than every other country. I mean, it seems so cliche, but it is true. You can achieve anything as long as you're given this great education, a public school education gives you those opportunities. And it was with, and I, and I think because of my, how much I valued education, how much I enjoyed learning in my college and law school, I really wanted to bring that love of education here as a board member and that's what I ran. I wanted to contribute back to Nutley because they have given me so much as a resident. I wanted to contribute back what I know and I know education, I know what a good education looks like. And I think these kids deserve a great education. So, I ran. I ran on, I wanted to also participate and change the dynamic of the board. I think we all share on that and elevate the conversation to one that's focused on education and prioritizing and making decisions that are based on the best interest of our kids. And I hope, and I, I've tried to be a good board member in doing that and participating in that. And I always tried to help. What I strive to do as a board member, I've tried to engage, participate with my fellow board members in changing the tone of the conversation. We all as board members and the members of the public, we are very concerned with, and we all ran with or out of a concern of where the Nutley School public education and the district were, really were standing academically. And we really all wanted to change it and we've been working so hard to do that. And I think it all started, it's kind of strange, it all started with the hiring of the superintendent. We've hired, the superintendent has the capacity to do amazing things and we're very lucky in Nutley to have. He has, and it's funny how it all worked out at the same time. The board was very concerned in changing the tone of the conversation, refocusing the conversation to that of academics first, students first, and lo and behold, we got the superintendent who was talking the same talk. So, and he is one that, you know, he does tell us that sometimes we feel like we're doing too much, too fast, but he understands, he wants to do a lot. And he's as frustrated as we are in trying to move this district forward. We want to like change it tomorrow. We're doing everything we can as a board and we're building and we, in the last two years have done a lot to put this district on a trajectory of excellence. And I think we're getting there. We have to continue though, as a board and as a community, to be focused on, you know, these high standards that we as a board have set, the superintendent has set. We need to continue to engage in the conversation. These kids have one shot at first grade, one shot at fifth grade, one shot at freshman year. We want them to have the best education possible. In order to do that, we have work here that's ready to have, we have superintendent, assistant superintendent, administrative staff that's doing a lot as well, the teaching staff, the union, we're all really focused on that. And I think what we really do need is the community to help us achieve that goal. There's a lot to be done and I ask, you know, I'm looking, tonight I thought it was going to be, this is going to be easier to do. But, and I'm happy to have you all here and see the presentations and see how the tone of the conversations we're having as a board and as a district have changed, you know, and I encourage you all to come to the board meetings. There is so much information given to you as to what we're doing with your tax dollars, what we're doing for the kids moving this district forward. And I, I have you all here now, this is the captain board, as I always talk about, please come back. I mean, every time, and I, when I tell the administration, the staff, two administrations, and I tell the parent, if the superintendent is your building, get to that building and listen to what he has to say. Because we're trying to really, we need to change the conversation, the community needs to be part of it. And I really encourage you to keep coming, keep seeing where your tax dollars are going and being well spent. I think he has a finance committee, he's really trying to build a more responsible budget. And in the span of two years, we've been able to, and this year as a result of the board site, we're always talking about five-year plans, ten-year plans, we're always thinking forward, strategic planning. We purchased all the new math series books for the entire district, science books, where facilities are being taken care of, we're investing in capital reserve like we never had. It's, we are on the right path and we really need the community to continue to support the board as they go forward. Going forward, I think the board should continue to be goal oriented and it's by establishing high standards for, we put it on the superintendent, but that's only kind of the board, but I think it's typically down into the staff. Like, for instance, the AP example, last year, the superintendent gave us a presentation talking about where our students fare on AP. And the board, we were really much, we never had seen it that way. And he said, well, we got to do something about it. He said, you know, it's classic, it's your goal this year to fix those AP test scores, do something about it. And he did and it did, the kids did better, more kids participating. And it's, it seems simple, but it really is about establishing goals and sticking to them. And every decision we make is really tied to a specific goal. I think we need to continue to make decisions consistent with strategic planning. I think we need to implement online grading immediately and I hope my fellow board members will continue to talk that parent portal. Someone has to take up that role. The administrative staff and everyone, they really need to give the superintendent a hundred and ten percent of their effort. I know they are and have to continue because good things are going to happen in Nutley if you do so. It's our job as a board to continue to support the superintendent and the difficult decisions he's making. You know, everything is about change and every time you change something, there's a lot of pushback. And I think this board has worked well in terms of supporting the superintendent. We have to continue to do that. I mean, the grading system, that was a big issue, but it turned out the superintendent was right. But we, I would just ask everyone to stay engaged in the conversation. I just want to thank everyone in the community that always would listen to me and help me think about, everyone, everyone in the special ed community. Barbara Martin, she's standing in the hallway, she came here, she would listen to me and help me stay focused. And Wayne Greenfender, my treasurer. And Jen Smythe, she's in the hallway too, she kept track of all my data and would give me emails that I would share to Ross and say, look at this, what do we get through this information? You don't know, and there's more, I'm not revealing any more sources. I want to thank Joanne Caciolo, she was a great source of inspiration, continues to be. I think that's, she made Nutley super special and that's why it's a true blue Santa Lee because I'm leaving behind a great child who does amazing things. Ruth Bedford, she was always, I always enjoyed speaking with her about education, she was a good supporter. My library board trustees, I'll continue to work with the library board going forward. They were always very humble, the staff, the teachers, the union, my babysitters, Kate Lynn Hope, and all my friends who made sure I could come to a board meeting, that's how the community could contribute to the school district by making sure my kids were, had someone watching them. It was a big juggling act for Michael and me, so thank you. And lastly, my board members, I want to thank you for the relationships and giving me, you know, I think sometimes when I first came here, I think, I don't know, maybe they didn't know what to expect and I'm glad that we've developed the relationships that we have because I think we're, we always found common ground in terms of what is in the best interest of the district. And I think that was very important to what we were doing. I'd like to thank Lisa and Brad for when we ran in a campaign, I think it was a very positive campaign and I think it was, it, you know, floated to our term here as trustees and covered your head too if you were missing, I didn't thank him too for engaging in such a positive campaign. Jim and Tommy and Charlie, I enjoyed our negotiations. I think we did a lot. I will continue to respond that, and I, of course, I enjoy all the... But I enjoyed our talks, I think, I will continue to keep telling you and watching where we're going. Sorry, but I'm going to still watch. Debbie, I asked Debbie to please continue to work on the extended date and report back because that's something I feel like I didn't, we've been matricized, but I think we have a lot more to do and if you want to make up the parent portal, we could be, um... Ryan, thank you for always listening to me at Starbucks and being, sitting next to me the last few months. I hope I haven't annoyed you too much, you know?
A little bit.
And Robert's not here, so, but, Robert, thanks for always looking at me and chuckling every time I talk or whatever. So, that's it. I, I'm sorry that I have to leave, but I'm going to be watching and I've told you all, anything you need, I, I'll learn what I can do to help you going forward, just please walk.
Please.
Go ahead.
I have absolutely no illusions that late night and early morning phone calls are going to cease just because you're an old man. And even on my cell phone, I'm sure you know, they can come in and I understand you have a whole staff of people feeding information, it makes more sense. It's fun to email. I go back to our first meeting and as a new board member, you were not part of the committee that selected me, but you have become a part of the board that's going to hire you, so I want to make sure you met me before you sat down. And I hope that everything discussed in that first meeting, we've moved in that direction. Everyone's different, I hope we work in a fantastic committee. The board has helped focus the conversation. I didn't fix anything that came into these quarters, we focused the conversation and our staff really came through. And I think that's the whole point to your speech, that if we focus and we work together, we can just really do it. I hope that one day we can realize the vision you have in your head of public education. And I will say that with all of our differences, if we could all end with your commitment to excellence and your unwillingness to accept anything less than excellent, then we're going to be very successful. I understand family situations change, but you know that I'm upset to say the least that we're leaving the board. And I just want to thank you for your time and I'm sure that we will have more conversations moving in the future, but all the best.
Mr. Swart.
Thank you, Mr. Swart. You know, this is kind of like a sad note for me, I spoke to Vicki the other day, but my morning in-house counsel has kind of left me because, well, Vicki's a great attorney and the veteran running and myself, Lisa met her, Olivia, Olivia, who came up with programs, we're all on the same agenda, running, which is a great thing. But Vicki has been a source of, you know, one of those something, you're not sure where it is, you can give Vicki the call, you know, she does this for a living, she does school board law, she does municipal law, she has a lot of things under her belt and she's been great through my morning conversation. I'm truly going to miss her. She loves this district, she's pushed hard for the kids. I know she'll be coming back, she'll be showing up at some meetings, which I think will be a lot of fun. But Vicki, you're a great board member, I met you through the barrier originally and good luck to where you go and I hope you're looking forward to getting on this school board because I give it a couple of years and we'll meet you at the school board meeting, engagement, being on the school board bringer. So, good luck. You've been great for the school board while you were here and also for the township. Thanks, Vicki.
I think it's really been a while, although I had to sit next to you and when we voted differently on the rare occasion I either got a kick or, but I always, always trusted that if you were there, it's going to be done. Not just because of your legal background, but because of the integrity that comes with you. All the conversations have been great, I remember freezing to death outside of a storm last one night, it's eleven thirty at night, but they've all been fun and we've been doing some great things. I don't think we're done.
It's somewhat of a shock, I heard rumors, but I didn't know for sure if it was true or not. So, I wish you the best of everything, you deserve it and the kind of pleasures that you're given.
I just want to thank Vicki for her professionalism, her dedication and all the contributions she's made to the board. She's been invaluable to this board, the district, and also the township. Thanks, Vicki, you and Michael for all your hard work and what you've done for Nutley. Thank you.
Vicki, I'd like to congratulate you on a job well done. I think you did it for all the right reasons and I valued your counsel and your independence and Vicki, it was valuable and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you. I said a lot of people don't know a bit of a relationship that we, you did have. We had a great time during negotiations. It was a personal reason. But Vicki, you always, you might not always agree, but we always got along and you were able to convince me sometimes your way, I think sometimes you listened to my way. And I think that's why you work on the board. Good luck where you go, I'm going to miss you and go with the life and service.
Vicki, it's been great having you on the finance committee. I learned a lot from you. You brought out good ideas all the time and you always have sound reasons for everything. So, I appreciate everything that you have given to me and to this committee and I wish you the best. I'm going to leave.
Vicki, you and I have talked quite often, you know that I'm going to miss you, I think, beside everything else, you've loved the board and you know, you've loved integrity. And this board, before us, needed that integrity program, needed the solid person that you are to help us with our policies, the guidance in the right direction. I appreciate all that you've done for me and it's happening in mission.
Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters in public discussion pursuant to NJSA ten four dash twelve, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed closed executive session at this time to discuss prudent matters. Be it further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequenting of the Board of Education or when the reasons for discussing such matters in close session no longer exist. All in favor?